Everyone, and welcome to the March 24 work session of the Ann Arbor City Council, where we are here to hear about 2627 budget planning from our indomitable city administrator. Mr. DeHoney, you have the con.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. You'll be hearing from six people this evening. As I realize, Councilmember Malick, this will be your first session going through with us. We don't bring everybody to the work session. We bring just a handful of people to give you an idea of some things that they're looking at within their budget. This can be a little confusing in that you might hear information about something tonight that's not actually in the budget. But we do share information with you so that you get a flavor for what people are looking at, what needs there might be, what horizon issues there might be. This is a little bit of an unusual environment that we're in. We are trying to hold on to all of the funding that we have for various projects. We don't know if we'll be able to do that or not. So during the course of the fiscal year, we normally don't make many adjustments. We need to be open-minded about perhaps the need to do that this time, depending on how things go. This is not yet the time to start fielding budget questions, which you'll get a little information about that as well. The timelines between us and the state are not exactly aligned. So, for example, we normally are impacted by our portion of state shared revenue. The state is contemplating giving the cities more money, but that decision will not be made in time for us to know about it. So we'll have to adjust to it should it come down at some point later. First, you'll hear from Marty, who will frame both the process and give some information about the financial picture. Next will be Missy Stoltz, followed by Derek. Jennifer Hall will talk about the Housing Commission. Jordan Roberts will cover Public Services. And then Eli will be standing in for Monica this evening on a few HR things. So I will stop talking, and Marty, come on up.
Do I need to share the presentation, Jackie? Or is it... The presentation, is it loaded and ready?
Um, I understand.
Oh, yep, okay. There we go. That's what I was looking for. Good evening. As Mr. DeHoney mentioned, I'm Marty Pershan. I'm the city CFO. And tonight, I'll be presenting our fiscal year 2627 budget plan and fiscal outlook. We covered this portion already. The budget cycle includes a proposed fiscal year 26 budget, as well as our fiscal year 27 budget plan. I'll begin by quickly covering our budget calendar, which begins with tonight's presentation, followed by Mr. DeHoney's recommended budget and the first reading of ordinance amendments necessary for rate changes, which will be presented at our April 21 regularly scheduled council meeting. Next, on May 5, we'll hold the public hearings necessary for the budget and the ordinance and fee changes, as well as conduct that second reading on the ordinance changes required for rates, leaving only the budget for consideration on the evening of May 19. A few reminders regarding the development of the recommended budget. Annually, we adopt two types of budgets, an operating budget and a capital budget. The city administrators' recommended budget incorporates council policy, staff expertise, as well as public input. A few key policies that we adhere to when developing the budget include fund balance policies, which in the case of the general fund is to maintain a 15% to 20% fund balance; pension and retiree healthcare funding policies, which requires a city to budget the higher of the actuarial required contribution, or the existing level of funding in the current year's budget, plus whatever we are assuming general fund increases to be; our capital improvement program policies; our capital repair and replacement policies, that would be for the general fund, as well as our enterprise funds; and finally, our parks fairness resolution, which requires the general fund portion of the parks budget to be increased at the same rate as the average percentage increase of the total general fund budget. When we get to council consideration on the evening of May 19, seven votes are required to adopt the budget. Six votes will be required to amend the recommended budget on that evening, whereas during the fiscal year, eight votes are required to amend the budget. If for some reason the budget is not approved at that meeting, the second council meeting in May, Mr. DeHoney's recommended budget is considered adopted. Budgets are adopted by fund in total, not by line item, except for the general fund, which is adopted by service area represented. Finally, state law does not allow for expenditures of monies unless budgeted. Therefore, each June in this upcoming June, you'll see a resolution brought forward for budget amendments to avoid forecasted budget overruns. I'll now shift to some background information, which includes information regarding the assumptions that will be reflected in the fiscal year 26 proposed budget. Due to our financial policies and our commitment to them, the city is currently in good financial position. Our audits are clean, and our bond ratings are strong. Particularly in the general obligation category, we are one of less than 10 communities in the state of Michigan with a AAA bond rating. Ratings of this nature allow us to receive beneficial rate on debt issuance, which in turn allows us to accomplish more than we would without it. We demonstrate fiscal control by balancing our recurring revenues and expenditures and maintain our fund balance within policy requirements. In addition, our pension and retiree health plans are well-funded due to our funding policies and the expertise provided by our retirement systems board. Keep in mind, the funding ratios represented here are as of June 30, and do not include current market changes. We begin the budget process by making some financial assumptions and forecasts. Those assumptions are based on historical data, trends, as well as current information. As I'm certain you're all aware, we are currently experiencing some economic volatility, which doesn't impact our fiscal year 26 assumptions. It normally will lag before it hits the city financials. Therefore, the current economics don't reflect any impacts. But once we get past fiscal year 27, we are conservative in our forecast. That being said, we annually revisit the assumptions and have the opportunity to adjust them accordingly. The major revenue assumptions we move forward with in this cycle are a almost 6% increase in property tax, in real personal property taxes, which equates to about $5 million increase in tax revenue. This increase includes both additions and subtractions to the tax base. We'll talk a little bit more about that in an upcoming slide. Also included is, as Mr. DeHoney mentioned, some increase in state shared revenue, 1% on the constitutional side, 4% in statutory. If we are lucky enough to receive additional revenues in those categories, we can reflect those changes in the upcoming cycle. For parking, we continue to rebound, and we are anticipating a healthy increase in both fiscal year 26 and 27 of 14 and 7% respectively. Taking a closer look at the tax levy history, the graph indicates the result of economic conditions and current development policy. We continue to see an increase of tax revenue, which is a direct result of increase of taxable value. The legend on the left represents the tax revenue, which indicates the approximate $5 million revenue increase that I mentioned. And the blue line represents the graph, represents the increase in taxable value. So you can see that we are projecting that 7% increase in taxable value. On the expense side, we're anticipating a 6.4% increase in personnel costs, which is mostly attributable to wages; a 14.2% increase in fleet costs. And those are directly as a result of increased vehicle and equipment costs, as well as cost of electrifying our fleet where possible. In addition, we are seeing a 5.8% increase in IT costs, which are associated with an increase in need, as well as the cost of that technology. When all those assumptions, along with service area budget requests, come together, we are projecting the general fund to have recurring revenues exceeding recurrent expenditures in both fiscal year 26 and 27. You'll notice that the margin between recurring revenues and expenses gets smaller by fiscal year 27. When we move out to fiscal year 28 and beyond, we are projecting that situation to be in a negative. In addition, you'll see in the center of the slide some intended use of fund balance for one-time projects and initiatives, while still remaining within our policy range of 15% to 20% of fund balance. I'm now going to switch to some ask of the finance department in the upcoming cycle, or some horizon issues. The two needs that we're requesting as part of this project is, number one, an FTE for a deputy chief financial officer, which clearly would put a number two in charge of finance. And it also reflects a growing need of support. We have several large-scale projects that are coming up, including the SEU stand-up and increased environmental development, which requires the attention of the CFO or a deputy. Secondly, and maybe even more importantly to that, is contracted payroll backup. We currently have a single point of failure with our payroll process. Therefore, we're asking for an additional $40,000 to provide contracted payroll backup. To this point, we have a very dedicated payroll supervisor who has not failed us to date. But we are in a vulnerable position as far as processing payroll, and this will allow us to fix that Finally, the last thing for me this evening to discuss is the proposed increase of utility rates. As I mentioned earlier, on April 21, the first reading in the ordinance changes related to utility rate changes will take place. We will be requesting a 6% increase in water rate revenue, and a 3% in both the sewer and stormwater rates. Details surrounding those required adjustments will be presented as those rates are brought forward for consideration. That concludes my remarks for this evening, unless there's any questions I can answer.
Thank you for that. I just noticed on Slide 11, you had non-recurring items. Could you describe what those are, the non-recurring revenue and expenses?
So those will be for one-time expenses. Most of them are due to capital projects. So most of that consists of some dam repairs that you'll hear Jordan speak about a little bit later, but most of those are related to one-time capital projects.
Great, thank you.
All right, then. If there's nothing else, I'll hand it off to Dr. Stoltz.
Thank you very much, Marty.
Thanks Administrator DeHoney, Mayor Taylor, and councilmembers for the opportunity to be here tonight. We are going to go on a little adventure. I was asked to talk about four specific things, so I want to give you a sense of the funding landscape. We've talked about this in many different ways, but what does it look like, state, federally, as we look at climate and equity work broadly? Then I wanted to share a little bit about what our asks were as we look at the budget cycle, how the SEU is going, just it's a great time to kind of give an update on where we stand and what's coming forward, and then the horizon issues that we face. So, without further ado, let's go. You may have seen this before. This is a table. I know it's really hard to read, but I want to share with you all a glass half-full, glass half-empty story. On a glass half-full story, in the last 18 to 24 months, OSI has been able to raise $32 million, leveraging things like the Community Climate Action Millage, the expertise of staff, our community, and the input that we've received from them. So these are the grants that we've been able to secure. Great news, right? That's pretty extraordinary. On the other side, the glass half-empty, we have $32 million at risk right now because of changes in the landscape. So broadly speaking, I wanted to give you an overview of where things stand. Our philosophical approach, working with the attorney's office, and of course Administrator DeHoney, is most of these are signed grant agreements. We are under contract. We proceed. So we are spending money. We are allocating, whether that's the EV charger program funds to buy those EV chargers that we're putting out in the community. If that's our circular economy planning work, you'll see a contract come forward for that. We are moving forward because we have signed agreements. We will encumber funds. We will make good on those funds. The one exception here that I want to point out is sort of an ironic story in the, I guess, half-full, half-empty category as well, and that is the $10 million for the Bryant Geothermal Project. So that funding is not, that is the only one on the screen, that is not under a signed grant agreement. So everything else is pretty solidly protected. So we're certainly paying attention to that particular area of funding. On the positive, however, in executive orders, what we have seen is geothermal identified as a must-invest-in technology. Now, that is very different from solar and wind, which are called out as do not invest in. So we actually feel pretty confident that the geothermal funding is going to move forward. And even as of last week, we were in conversation with our project manager, who thankfully still is at the U.S. Department of Energy, and he is also confident that things will move forward. So we will be bringing you, hopefully, a grant agreement. All of this is to say that our philosophical approach is, we have successfully secured $32 million, and we will fight to maintain that $32 million. And we do not expect to see more funding. I think it is fair to say, from everything we're seeing federally and even at the state level, it is highly unlikely we will see investments coming forward for climate and equity work. Those are areas where the administration has been very clear, they are not priorities. So we are going to continue to look for philanthropic, for partners. We're going to leverage where we can. We're leaning into kind of more bread and butter, if you will, initiatives like fire stations and fire safety, although we've also seen federal funding for those programs cut as well. So we had a really successful run. We are used to in Sustainability Office sadly not having a lot of funding opportunity. We're going to preserve what we've got, but we don't anticipate, when we look out into the horizon, that we're going to be able to bring you a lot more funding that we've been able to secure. And again, that's not because I don't think staff are capable of bringing home funding, it's because I don't think we're going to see a lot. So, just as an overview here, if you have any questions, let me know, but we're staying the course, is I think what I want to share on this slide. Now, what I also want to share is, in terms of our kind of budget asks in the Sustainability Office, understanding the context of federal and state funding is important, because historically that is how we've supplemented a lot of the funding we've been able to receive. We've been able to leverage it at a high level. Knowing that's not likely, we sort of looked out and said, okay, well, what does the landscape fundamentally look like? And a decision has been made, understandably, that effective the next fiscal year, the portion of the public safety rebate from the county mental health and public safety millage is going to move from OSI. And that has historically, before the Community Climate Action Millage, been our primary source of revenue. It's about $1.2 million. And because it was our primary source of revenue, it's how we funded staff. So we have two staff that are in that funding that we have to make some decisions about what to do with those staff. We also have programmatic dollars in there, but we've been able to kind of work the budget to figure out how we can absorb some of that funding. I also want to point out that we are, right now, holding all of the SEU startup costs in the Sustainability Office. So we've been able to take some of those grants that we've won, negotiate with some of the funders to pull some funding aside to help fund the executive director, but we've also made choices like, we have a vacancy in OSI that we aren't going to fill, because we need those dollars to fund the SEU executive salaries, our executive director's salary. We also need that one FTE. For the one FTE, we'd be hiring at the city, because as you know, we can't just have funding. We also have to have the FTE cap, or make sure we increase that cap if we're bringing on more staff. So we're absorbing those costs. At the same time, we're losing the public safety, the mental, yes, the public safety rebate from the county, and we're losing sidelines on future funding. So the ask we made was, we think we can absorb a lot. We can be quite creative, but we wanted to preserve those two staff. And so the ask was to move them into the general fund. And what you see at the very last bullet here are those costs. Those are all in. That's IT, that's municipal service charges, that's their salary, et cetera. And that's the cumulative value for those two positions. The last kind of broad topic, before I get to horizons, is I just wanted to give you an update on where we are with the SEU, because this does tie into, of course, a huge commitment, and, well, that you've made to the voters, the voters have made to us, and that we, as a Sustainability Office, continue to make to the community broadly. And it has budget ramifications as well. So, good news. You've seen the first ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance for the SEU. We're coming with the second reading of that ordinance. We also are moving forward with posting for the executive director, so we can hire a person to come onboard. We know that in order for the SEU to be operational, we need to hit about 20 megawatts of subscribed demand in the system. It can be lower if we get better interest rates, and I'm delighted to share, we are in conversations with people who look like they could offer us much lower interest rates, which means that 20-megawatt number might fall to something more akin to 12 to 15. All depends on the economics in play. We have over 800 individual addresses signed up right now that are interested in the SEU. We are in active discussions with Ann Arbor Public Schools about an opportunity to have them come in as kind of the anchors, which, in fact, if multiple schools signed up, we would hit our mark almost instantaneously, and we could start in that way. So we're looking and exploring lots of ways to bring on big subscribers, in addition to our residential subscribers, who are really excited about the program. I mentioned in the previous slide, we've also been able to look at some of the awards that we've secured and carve out some funding to help launch the SEU. So, for example, if the geothermal award comes in, we put in funding for five staff of the Sustainable Energy Utility, because the SEU would own that geothermal system. So we were able to negotiate those costs. Now, of course, we have to get that signed grant agreement in play, but we would be hiring those folks after the executive director came onboard, because they need to build their team, right? They know the expertise that are needed in their house and in their shop, broadly speaking. So where we are today, we've had these really great conversations with financial partners, where we put in some grant applications explicitly for SEU startup costs. We're talking to rate firms to help us figure out how we can do the final rate analysis. We are sending bi-weekly updates to those who join the waitlist. We're working on a community engagement plan. We're starting neighborhood black parties in three weeks, which will be wonderful to get folks excited about the SEU and generate some more interest and support. And then the goal is that, for some of the funders, we might actually have to have a commitment by end of the year, which is pretty big, meaning we could, in fact, by the end of '26, have SEU assets in the ground, generating electricity and revenue for the city. So it is not fast enough for our residents, we all know that, and yet incredibly fast on our side, having incubated, I guess, the SEU. So gratitude to all the city staff that are working on this. But I would say, in the moment that we're in, if you have anyone who's interested in the SEU, if you have questions, you want to talk to your constituents, please let us know. We're happy to go out and continue to let folks know, there's a lot that is unfolding in regards to the SEU creation. We don't want people to kind of fill their own narrative, or build their own narrative about what we're doing. We're doing a lot out here, and we're very excited to bring this to fruition. So just to close out, some of the issues that we're excited to overcome in OSI, we are, when you consider our Maricor members, we're bigger than space allows. We physically have 10 seats for 29 people, right? So we can't have the whole team in the office at any point. We're working on a strategy collectively here at the city to figure out how we can hotel, make sure that space is accessible for everyone who needs it, and that'll be wonderful for our team. Shockingly, we have a lot of extroverts, and they need to be together. They need to cross-pollinate. And so I'm excited to actually have space to do that with them. We are going to be really invested in this coming year in growing our commercial work. And one of the things I didn't say on the slide, a pressure that we sort of feel as the budget constricts, is more and more people want more and more of us, which is wonderful, because that means they know about us, and they want to engage in the movement. The downside is, take, for example, our rebate program. That rebate program is for residential, right? It's multifamily and it's single-family. It's $1.9 million. That's simply not enough money to help houses of worship, and nonprofits, and every business, and every major institution who really wants support, is eager to do something, and could be a great story and catalyst for more movement. There just simply isn't enough money to help everybody do what they want to do. So we're getting this kind of additional pressure put on, which we think is lovely, but we've got to find a way to support the ecosystem more broadly. So we'll have some ideas coming forward, but again, that's another budget crunch, that's sort of an unfortunate timing and coincidence in terms of all the events happening at once. And then I think you're going to see, if I had to pick the theme for fiscal '26, it's going to be circular economy. People are really excited about it. You might have just seen our electronics take-back event is coming up. But we have so much interest, and it's so tangible and personal for people to be involved in the circular economy, that we're going to be doing a lot of work in that area. So circular economy and commercial engagement really are the two spaces I think you're going to see OSI have to solve for. Not, again, not in a negative, what an opportunity to be able to walk into those spaces, but we're not going to pretend that we have all the answers. So we're excited to be engaging with our community to co-identify strategies and solutions, to do what we've all set out to do, which is equitably decarbonize Ann Arbor. So with that, I'll just say, questions, concerns, heartburn?
Thank you. I have a question about just spending the money that we have, you know, been awarded. Are you saying that we have the money in hand, and like, how are we mitigating the risk of spending the money when we might not have the money in hand?
Yeah, I may have to turn to our extraordinary attorney here for some assistance, but philosophically, the way that we're approaching this is, we have no stop-work orders. We can still draw down funds, and so we are. We're staying true to our grant agreements. We're making sure if we said we'd report in a certain date, we report on that date. We are giving no reason to have a grant terminated. And we are spending, which means we're going into the system and we're collecting and getting reimbursed from those funds. It is possible, let me just super transparently tell you, we have had some threats to that funding, right? And all of those threats have sort of made us a, I don't know how else to describe it, a ping-pong ball. You're sort of like bouncing back and forth. Is this dead? Is this alive? And what tends to happen is, we'll see something out of DC, and then an administrative court or some sort of court will put a stay on it, and then the guidances proceed, right? Continue spending. Those stays have been sometimes permanent, sometimes temporary. So each grant in that has a different tracker where we're monitoring and following. But I would say, I have high confidence that if someone tries to take away something that we've rightly won, and it is not legal, we will challenge the legality of that in whatever means seem most appropriate to council. Well, thank you. With that, I believe I get to turn over to Mr. Delacorte.
I was going to say, it sounds weird. Hi, good evening. You all know who I am at this point. I'm probably going to start with the second most complicated plan over the next year will be the implementation of the city's comprehensive plan through the Planning Department. We are starting here with what is the horizon issue over the next, you know, six to over the next, you know, six to 12 months. Public engagement will continue on those recommendations. The plan is being drafted right now. I think much of council is aware that this is the point where I stood up here last year and told you that implementation was going to be the hard part, right? That doing the plan was going to be relatively easy. But once the plan started moving to implementation, we were going to see where the difficult part comes. And that is where we are now. In fact, there's a lot of discussion about how the zoning or how the comprehensive plan will be implemented. There's a lot of conversation about, well, we want to see what's going to be implemented before we agree to the plan. And these are the difficult decisions that are going to come over the next year. We have had conversations about accelerating the implementation part, which would be the rewrite of the UDC, the Unified Development Code, so that the two projects could run concurrently for the last portion of this, which would allow people to understand where and what concerns are addressed and where and what parts of this process. It also potentially has the issue of having two concurrent processes going at the same time that are dependent on each other. So we have been talking about the pros and cons of that. That rewrite, from a financial standpoint, we did not put money in the budget for '26 for it. There is a very good chance that will be coming prior to the completion of the '25 budget with a proposal and a contract for the implementation or the rewrite of the UDC, which we call kind of the implementation section of it, prior to this budget being adopted so as to start that process and have those people in place prior to. If for some reason that doesn't happen, we would be going back to Mr. DeHoney and asking for that money and some combination of '26, '27. So it's not in the budget right now, but we thought we would put this on here as the number one slide for planning because this is going to be the thing that planning has to deal with for the next 12 to 18 months. Some combination of the comp plan adoption and then converting those recommendations into implementable zoning districts, not to mention the process potentially of rezoning properties to come into compliance with those new districts. That is going to be a massive undertaking, at least on par with the creation of the comp plan. It is where all the details go, and it will be it will be the bulk of the next year's work for the Planning Department, other than project management. So some of the things that come along with that are the consideration of infrastructure. How does that play a role in it? Commitment to ongoing future planning needs and future corridor studies. All of that will come as implementation recommendations as part of the comp plan. But every one of those will come with some kind of resource capacity or funding component with it. So whether it's in '26 or whether the results of this end up in the '27 budget, you will see budget asks for this coming forward in the near future. Department review and customer service. From the Planning Department's side, we did put a, what we're calling a site plan coordinator or compliance officer in the budget. This is something that came in combination with public services and a lot of work that was done cross-departmentally on where are the biggest roadblocks or impediments to getting projects through the process into the ground and paying taxes. We spent an enormous amount of time looking for ways through the utilization of Stream or other projects to not have this have to be a position, someone that actually goes out and works with the project owners on how to get through the process and how to complete their projects so they can get occupancy. That has continued to be an issue or maybe the number one issue we have as projects move from the planning approval to the Building Department. There is an enormous amount of things that come with that project through the process, which leaves lots of room for confusions or things to be left out or discovered at the end. We spent a lot of time with public services trying to determine if this position would be of assistance to those outside agencies. We feel like there is a massive need for this position, and it will help people who are trying to get projects done get them done quicker with the city. So they will work cross-departmentally to make sure all of the issues associated with a site plan and approval are tracked appropriately and are not surprises for the development community at the end of the process. So that is the employment of that position. The zoning coordinator, part-time to full-time. The additional zoning coordinator has proved to be invaluable to us. It is a, I don't want to say nominal, but it is not a massive cost to move that person from temp to full-time. It does, for the first time since I've been in the city, give us two people working with the community on zoning compliance. We've had one person for the last 10 years doing that. That person is growing closer to retirement, too. So this does give us some succession in that role. I don't want to say it lets us be proactive yet, but it does allow us to be a little less reactive potentially within the community when it comes to zoning compliance. And we think that is helpful to the folks who want to work with us as well. From a parks ask standpoint, we've asked for increase in staffing, temp staffing, increases in supplies, lots of general increases. Those are all covered by increases in fees and fee adjustments and minor things you'll see that night. So there's really no negative cost associated, really with anything in parks. In '27, we are looking at Recreation Coordinator and potentially one other FTE or part-time FTE. Everything we're bringing forward with parks is, if it impacts the general fund, is covered by some decrease in some other place, some type of offset or some type of revenue fee generation that is far out of date. I think everybody knows from the times I've been up here, parks fees are really reasonably scaled compared to other communities. We do have room to make some adjustments to provide the capacity we need. And those adjustments are being made as part of this, these recommendations. Fleet contribution for new vehicles and a new planning coordinator, those are really the asks out of the village. Those positions will be partially paid for from fees, general fund, other things, and partially paid for from the village. So that's where we get the money and are able to not impact the general fund. Building and rental, we are asking, this is probably maybe our most straightforward ask on FTEs. Those are rental inspectors is what those are. Those are general fund inspectors. We have spent a lot of time over the last years, eight years, trying to make sure that each rental inspector is cost neutral. COVID cost us a lot of time and effort in that. They were not revenue neutral when we got here. We do, we have about 30,000 rental units in the city. We're able to inspect about 3,000 to 5,000 of them per year. We'd like to get into every one of those units on a three-year cycle. We just can't do it with the staff we have. We now believe we have a structure and a fee schedule set that each position pays for itself through the number of inspections they do. It is important that they do rental inspections, that they not be moved over to do other things because when they're not doing inspections, they are then losing that revenue generation and become a negative drag on the general fund. So we have to keep them scheduled. I think we try to keep them scheduled 80% of their day. But in doing so, we have now have at least a one- or two-year trend where they are paying for their individual costs. So we are now in a position to try to increase those to get into more units within that three- or four-year range. This will help us immensely. This puts us from six dedicated rental inspectors to four. The associated costs with that are all things that go along with what we need to do to provide that service, whether it's cars or other things. The biggest issue we're having in building is just attracting. Everybody is going through this. We're having a very hard time attracting talent that has the appropriate certifications and inspections. It's causing us to move some people around and use some outside resources to make sure we have enough licensed inspectors. Our Building Department, similar to some other departments in the city, has taken a proactive approach with the state, trying to figure out a way to lessen or simplify the certification standards, almost allowing us to hire journeyman inspectors, similar to what you would hire a journeyman trade person, so they don't have to have the level of skill. We're having mixed results with that. But we would like to be a pilot community where we bring in non-certified inspectors to work with our inspectors for a certain time and then have that automatically turn into State of Michigan inspection certification. So Alicia's been working on that for quite some time. Yeah, the big thing is, is we just have, and I said 30,000 units. We're seeing thousands of units come online every couple of years now with the growth. We understand that the city wants to see additional growth and growth in housing. That's going to incorporate more rental housing. That's going to incorporate a need to get into more units on a regular basis. This is in part gearing up for that as well. That's all I got. That's it. I could tell you all about the Parks Capital Study, but we'll come back on another day and spend a significant amount of time talking about that as well. Yes?
A question a couple of slides backward. You were talking about the number of FTEs. I think you were adding to the inspections.
Yeah.
So it's an additional 14 FTEs? What's the total?
That would be four rental. That gives us 10.
Okay.
Total with building inspectors, which are also DSIs. It puts us right about at 30.
Okay, thanks.
Yes?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. First of all, shout out to the photo of the Vet's Dog Park. That was pretty awesome. I'm just really pleased to see that the attention is given to customer service in that new site plan coordinator position. I think that that's going to do, especially as we want more projects to come online and we want to really focus on the experience of people doing business with the city. I think that's going to help to move the needle and just kudos to your team for thinking that through and being committed to making it happen as part of the budget.
I would be remiss if I didn't make a shout out. When we talked to Milton about, we now have a building permit liaison who is getting up to speed and is every day finding ways to be more helpful for people who want to have, it's basically someone to hold your hand, regardless of who you are, from the time you want to issue a building permit to a CFO. We've had a staff person that's been able to help with the CFO stuff. But in improving that position last year and getting it hired, we now have someone that greets people at the door, is primarily responsible for phone calls. And then this person really fills in the gap between the site plan portion of it and that building portion of it, making sure everything that's associated with these projects track through the years. So the ability to put all three of those in position over the last three years is really helping us at this point. So I appreciate it, but it's a shared, thank you for sure.
Catherine? So I just want to make sure that I understood that though you have not put a request in the FY '26 budget for plan, Comprehensive Plan implementation.
Correct.
You are open to coming back to us for that money if you decide that you do want to try to run implementation concurrent with the final stages of drafting and approval.
Yes.
Okay. Because those final stages of drafting and approval are likely to go almost to the end of the calendar year '25.
Yep.
Right? Okay.
We are very interested. There is a lot of significant thought about the idea of having the contractor group that's going to assist us with writing the UDC. It's a necessary capacity issue. Be onboard as the comp plan is rounding into shape to lessen the learning curve of that group as to how to take the things that are being proposed and be able to offer feedback on how they will be implemented. Usually it's one ends, and then it's a year until you get the other contractor onboard, and you have to bring them up to speed and everything else. The idea of overlap, based on the amount of work we're doing, has appealed. I'm not going to lie, it has the potential to be confusing, too, running two processes at the same time. We are looking into proposals and trying to figure out how that would work before we bring that cost to you. But I would anticipate it'll be here before fiscal '26 kicks in in July. At least the contract. I don't know how much of the work will be up and running, but that will allow us to get them started, transferring all the good stuff that goes on for the first two months.
And then to throw one more ball into the mix. At one point, I heard talk of combining a revision of the UDC with the implementation of the comp plan because it might be more difficult to stuff the comp plan changes into the existing UDC than to revise the UDC. Is that still an act of thoughts?
Yeah, it is revised. As of staff's recommendation right now, right now, is we believe, similar to what we did with the comp plan, there is so much history, cross-competing information. Trying to take the existing UDC and then restructure it with the new information will be more difficult than taking it, setting it aside, and building a new UDC based on this comp plan. And the logic is very simple, right? It doesn't mean there aren't wonderful things in the UDC that need to move from the UDC to whatever new ordinance we have. I would love to call it the zoning ordinance now, like every other community, but if we're going to stick with the UDC, we can. But that conversion, starting from scratch and building up, as opposed to trying to modify and include sections and stuff, makes a hell of a lot of sense to us at this point. We leave room for the consultants who are making the proposals to tell us otherwise, and there are others who have to make that decision. But initially, we think that's, it is staff's recommendation at this point.
Catherine?
I have a question about short-term rentals.
That wasn't on my slide.
Well, it's short-term rental registrations.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I should have written my own slide.
So is, in terms of enforcement of short-term rental registrations or as a, for example, if somebody, if it is believed that somebody in a residential zone is operating a short-term rental that's not their principal residence, is that you or is that community standards?
That's us.
That's you, okay.
Yeah, if someone is in violation and doesn't have a registration for a short-term rental, we may use community standards and some other groups to help us. We've always said this here, knowing it is one thing, proving it is another, to help make that argument once we've been made aware of it. Short-term rental enforcement right now, as we've talked in the past, is very reactive. We don't have anybody out there doing it proactively for some of the reasons we talked to. Until we can inspect all the structures and do those types of things, we prioritize that. But it is and does start with us. And then ultimately, the responsibility of writing any enforcement tickets. We have written those and pushed those into the court cases. Not as many as we would like, but the egregious violators, we're able to move them along.
Okay, yeah, no, I, yeah, for my part, I'd like to express some feeling of wanting to be on that proactive side of enforcement.
Yeah, proactive would be great. That's our goal everywhere across the board, is to be proactive.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we'd like to be.
Further questions? One quick one.
Yes, sir.
You touched upon capital, Capitol Parks.
Yes.
ETA?
Soon, within six months. Presentations have already been drafted, some have been given at lower scales, it's not ready for primetime here yet. It's impressive. I mean, it points out what, we just talked about it, knowing versus proving. It is proving what we knew. We have a very significant long-term capital gap for parks capital projects, you know, tens, two hundreds of millions of dollars over the next 20 years. There will be need to be a combination of things put together to address those capital needs on a yearly basis. There is going to be no one magic bullet. I think that's what I kind of said here last year. The capital study is proving those assumptions we thought we had last year. So the numbers are good, they're going facility by facility, piece of capital infrastructure by piece of capital infrastructure, putting a price, putting a lifespan on it, and then giving us an idea of what it would cost to replace in this, these dollars, today's dollars, and then what that will look like as it projects out. So it's going to be, it is very helpful piece of work, and we intend to come and present the thing in total when it is done, and it is very close. So I would say within the next 90 days, Mayor, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am Jennifer Hall, the Director of the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. I am here to talk about our operating budget, which is roughly $48 million a year of that, roughly $28 million is HUD funding, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And the thing I want to talk about with our operating budget, it is a separate budget than what we consider to be our capital or development budget. However, what I need is due to any successes we have at our development side. So anytime we develop a property that we are going to own and manage, we actually need to have people there to collect rent, lease it up, market it, do maintenance. And so in anticipation of future developments that will be coming online in the next two years, we do need to hire some staff. Any staff that we hire is paid for from our own budget, from our rents and grants that we secure, but because we're city employees, the city does front the general funds to pay for our staff and then invoices us to pay them back for those costs. So it doesn't impact the general fund in a long-term way, it's a short-term way, and we do end up hiring folks once we are ready to secure the funds and hire them. In addition to the property management, we are starting to do more administration of different grants and loans to other developers with millage funds, and we have our community center at Dunbar Tower will be coming online in the summer of 2026, and we'll need a manager to manage that. I'm also asking for a increase in the pay for our Housing and Economic Development Director, that we have not been able to hire somebody full-time due to needing really a pay increase to attract folks that are qualified to do that position. So I've got the fiscal year '26 and '27, both expenditures, and on both sides it's new revenue, both of those. What projects are scheduled to be completed that are funded by the millage? Dunbar Tower will be, we will be leasing up starting in February of 2026. Avalon's, Veridian, Grover at Veridian, they will be leasing up this summer. And the Annex Group, we actually provided a $3 million loan to the Annex Group for the Union at A Squared, and they will be starting to lease up next June. The last item I'm going to talk about is Horizon issues. I have no idea. I mean, your guess is as good as mine on what's going to happen at the federal level. I can tell you what we've seen happening and what we anticipate happening. I was very surprised that our rental assistance for our tenant-based and project-based rental assistance, not only state-level, but we actually are seeing an increase in the continuing resolution. Do I know whether that will happen in the next fiscal year? I do not. So we're being very conservative in pulling people off our waitlist and leasing new people up because if our budget gets cut, the last person who leased up is the first person to lose their voucher. And we do not want to have people who are six months into their lease and then suddenly lose their rent subsidy. We have heard, and you've probably seen, that about half of the HUD budget, or I'm sorry, staff in the Detroit office is going to be cut, and we have heard, we don't know for sure, that the Detroit HUD office will probably move to Chicago. Don't have any control over that, do not know what the impact will be. And there are, have been some cuts in the HUD budget, but not the areas that we work with the most significantly. Concerned though about any impacts to our residents, low-income households, whether that's people who are veterans, whether that's people who have social security disability or social security income, the schools and the special education programs, that can have a significant impact on our families. It can impact both their income and so how much rent they pay. So if they pay less rent, then we need more rent subsidy from HUD. It also can impact various family dynamics and issues that could require more services. But again, I do not know what exactly that impact will be. The biggest impact we are seeing right now is in the development, in the marketplace for development. So we're already seeing with the tariff, or the threats of tariffs and actual tariffs, we are seeing changes in the cost of materials and availability, but it's been like that for several years since COVID, but it's getting worse. And then there's just the financial market, like we just don't know where interest rates are going, we don't know what's happening with our equity markets for our tax credits, and we don't know what's going to happen with, we have several projects that we should be getting IRA credits that we installed solar. This is our first year that we're submitting that for reimbursement from the IRS. Hopefully it all goes through, but we don't know what that looks like in the future, and we've got contracts underway. So if we don't get those credits from the IRS through the IRA program, we will have to backfill them with other funding sources. My biggest concern, probably also unpredictable, is how many evictions there will be in the community due to people who have job losses and the impact through different types of I do want to point out, because most people don't really think about this, we receive $28 million a year from HUD, about $26 million is rent subsidies. And it's not just for our own properties, it's not just for Avalon properties, it's for the private sector. And so those rent subsidies are paying a lot to private landlords in the community, and so if there's a significant loss in rent funding for our tenants, then that is a rent loss also to our local landlords, some of whom are, you know, they own a single-family home or they are McKinley. So a wide range of landlords. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that we are doing a follow-up to the film that we brought into town for, called Beyond the Bridge. We are actually doing, we had already planned on doing a local film. It's our third film working with Braco, who did A Letter to the West Side. So we're going to have a film that goes through and shows people how our local homeless response system works, what is working, what isn't working, and what we can do about it. So just a heads up on that. I think that's it. And is there any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Jordan Roberts, the new Public Services Area Administrator. I believe I've met all of you. If not, yeah. Anyway, we'll get started. Nice little pictures here of all the different things we have going on here. Today I'm going to talk about the asks from public services, and the asks kind of focus around four priorities within public services. We want to gain a better understanding of what our current infrastructure needs are. While we're doing that, we're going to need to be planning for what our future infrastructure demands are going to be, especially with all the development and growth. And then we also want to maintain and optimize our services and align with the goals within the city, transportation and sustainability goals. These are things, you know, the range of things that we're looking for are, we're doing water main condition assessments, inundation map analyses, we're doing, you know, sanitary capacity analysis to find out what do we have now, what can we build, and what are we hoping to do in the future? The first category that we, like, we're involved with is the federal mandates for the Superior and Barton dams. These are going to be security improvements and repairs. These have been identified in the capital improvement plan, but they're going to allow us to study and prioritize the maintenance needs for these dams. And then, and as, while doing that, we'll be able to make our concrete repairs, we have an air shaft that needs to be rehabilitated, and continuing the embankment project that you're all probably aware of. It's also going to address security and safety issues just from people being around there, and also it's a dam, so we want to keep it secure. For utility infrastructure, I kind of split it up into two categories. We have assessments and planning, and then critical systems, maintenance and repair. Our assessments and planning is focusing a lot on sanitary modeling, stormwater and sanitary comprehensive plan, what our capacity is. So when we build something or when somebody comes in to build a new, you know, 100-unit development, how do we have the capacity in our sewers to handle all those flushing toilets, right? Do we have the capacity in our water system to support all the water they're going to be drawing? That's also part of the water main condition for, we're having it assessed, looking for where we can make improvements to proactively address the aging infrastructure. We also have, we're looking into some water distribution and sourcing models. We want to protect our raw water sources. We use surface water and groundwater. And one of the studies we're looking at is how can we maximize the well field so we can draw more water out of that? Think of it as how do we, how do we either make the straw go deeper or put more straws in? And, because we want to be able to be secure and not rely almost solely on the Huron River. Another thing, obviously, is with gravel roads drainage. This is an ongoing study that we're working on to help with water issues in those neighborhoods, water management issues in those neighborhoods. For the critical maintenance, this is a lot of our aging infrastructure at plant, at our wastewater, water resource recovery facility, and our water treatment plant, as well as a lot of underground stuff. This is preventative maintenance. One of the requests is for electrical preventative maintenance where we have people go in and find all the near-failing electrical require, electrical needs that allows us to get on top of it and fix it before it is a failure, before we have any sort of catastrophic failures or interruptions in service. And then we also are asking to replace a number of pumps, valves, pipes. We have a filter press that needs to be replaced. We're replacing ground valves that I believe we started in this year, and we would want to continue that effort. Next sort of lump category is for our transportation and safety. We've, we've got ongoing or starting two large transportation studies. The North Main Transportation Study is letting us look at Main Street to try to collaborate with MDOT on, on how we can work together and look to see if we can increase the active transportation along there. And as well as our multi-lane road reconfiguration, we want to look at the feasibility of increasing alternate types of mobility along our main transit corridors. And then we're also doing sign replacements on local streets. This is going to create retro reflective, well, we're going to install signs with retro reflectivity. I learned that word and I love it. And basically, it's just the signs that you'd see on highways that the light is projected back to the driver so you can clearly read the signs. We're going to start, we've started reviewing and want to begin installing the signs on our local streets. We're also asking for a Ford Lightning to support our bike lane maintenance instead of the diesel dump truck that we use right now. And we're also looking for road cuts, just due to lack of capacity, we're not able to keep up with the amount of road cuts that happen for damage, for a falling tree, for needing a, you know, to get to a water main. We can patch them, but if we want to do a much nicer replacement, some additional funding to help us bring services in to cover that for us is ideal. We also want to work on delivering our high-quality services that our residents expect. It's, the focus is going to be on enhancing our water and air quality through equipment, equipment upgrades. So for instance, this will be Headworks Carbon at the Water Resource Recovery Facility to improve air quality, and it's going to be a lab equipment that's going in the water treatment to help us monitor water quality real-time and allow us to make adjustments as needed. We're also looking to develop solid waste goals and opportunities through a services study, through understanding what our residents are disposing of, and looking for, looking for opportunities to divert from the landfill. One of the programs that we're using there is, it's Move Out Ann Arbor. It's recently started where we're using, since we have student move out in May, there's a lot of furniture that has been lightly used for nine months, and our solid waste unit, it has been coordinating drop-off sites and pickups with local community groups that use, that use this, this opportunity to fill homes for, you know, I think, Cabbage Chat for Humanity, there was one they had that was a, I can, the name escapes me, but these, these help furnish apartments and homes for people that otherwise wouldn't have access to this quality of furniture. We also want to work on the reliable system monitoring. The, if you've never been to our water treatment plant, that screen behind on the photo there isn't our water treatment plant, but I've been there and it looks just like that. This is what is required to, to maintain the water quality, to make sure we are meeting all federal guidelines and how we keep our water clean. And this is all, that's all the support, the services we give, and to make sure that we can continue to do that. This part here, where we're looking at some FTEs and some vehicles, the FTEs are asked, I don't, none of them are out of the general fund, they're all out of their relative funds. The solid waste supervisor, we currently only have one for the entire solid waste unit, and that unit works, they start as early as 5:00 AM, they may be working 12-hour days and six days a week. That supervisor is, is, it needs help. There's a lot of, a lot of times that supervisor has to become an operator when somebody is out. And so this would enable some redundancy and allow the, us not to need one supervisor, or us only have one supervisor. There's other, you know, SOPs that can be drawn up, other supervisory work that, that can be handled. The compost coordinators also with solid waste, this is going to be with partnering with OSI from the Climate Action. And this is going to be expanding compost collection to multifamily housing that will, that will increase our reach there, and this person's also going to be doing outreach and education for compost collection and, and looking at, at expanding that program. The forestry outreach is currently done by an intern, it's been done for a number of years by an intern, but the, by making it a full-time position, we are trying to take over the Citizen Pruner Program from NAP and allow them, so we would take that and then they can work on tree planting. This person would also be able to manage all sorts of tree programs, the Elizabeth Dean Fund projects, and by not, by, you know, having extra time to investigate the citizen requests and complaints that come through, asking about tree trimming or dangerous trees, we have, we'll have somebody that can follow up on that. In the water utility supervisor, we do have four, but we need a fifth one. The four water utility supervisors at the water treatment plant is a 24-hour operation. And the water utility, currently they've already clocked 1,000 hours of overtime last year, and we have 400 hours of deferred supervisory work that, because they were, they were covering or, or the only person there, they were unable to do some, some extra, you know, work that supervisors usually do. And then the site compliance coordinator that we're sharing with Community Services has been explained that's going to be helping to usher them through the, the development process. For vehicles, there, we are a heavy user of vehicles, we use a lot of heavy equipment, and we have a lot of trucks. The amount here, the vehicles that were due for replacement by Fleet, that is what is the shortage in what was available. And then we're also asking for another $500,000 for vehicle additions or upgrades, but these are things like the EV for bike lane maintenance. One of them is a flail arm mower, and this is going to, that piece of equipment would be able to pay for itself after two or three years. We currently use a contractor to maintain some road sides, along fences, harder-to-reach areas. If we remove the contract because we bought our own flail arm mower, we would be able to pay that off in savings rather than having an annual contract fee. And parks can also use this mower too for areas that they have, that they need. It's a pretty cool piece of equipment, it's got a whole big lawnmower blade on a reticulating arm. And last on there are the swap body trucks. These are, these are, they look very similar to the usual, you know, DPW truck with, with a salt box or whatever, but it, we're, they are enabled to take those off and swap out for different uses. So you may need a claw for a tree truck, you may need a dumpster that you can drop off at a collection point, and it is literally one, like a roll-off dumpster, it can be a salt box. And Fleet has said that when we, with these trucks, we can actually extend the life of the truck because it's not either just being used for one use and then sitting, or it's not just being put through the same off at a collection point and it is literally one, like a roll-off dumpster. It can be a salt box. And Fleet has said that when we, with these trucks, we can actually extend the life of the truck because it's not either just being used for one use and then sitting, or it's not just being put through the same type of work all the time. It allows them to extend the, the life of the truck. Then for Horizon issues here, I believe you may be aware of this one. The water treatment plant, one is very old, it will need to be replaced and brought up. We are getting, we just had a new consultant work with the, on the pilot plant that we have. And immediate, we're already getting good numbers from them that we were not getting from before, so we're very happy about that. And so that's, that's a good step in the direction. However, it's going to be a costly replacement. It is a water treatment plant. And that is something that I know has been going on before I got here and I hope to see through to the end. The second one is going to be increasing demands on infrastructure and services. That's kind of part of the, circling back to the priorities I brought up, which is as we're developing more, we're having more and more demand on our infrastructure. The picture on there you can see is just a screenshot from, I believe this is a sanitary and just showing that, you know, if, if a development were built on this line, it would be at 90-some percent capacity. So if we were to build another one, what, what happens? So that is something that we need to be mindful of, that we're planning for as we do these studies and investigate, and assessments. The other, the last Horizon issue here is, is for dam rehabilitation or decommissioning. We do have two hydroelectric dams. One of those dams is currently not operating as a hydroelectric, it is just a dam. But because of that, it's still subject to FERC mandates for the Federal Emergency Regulatory, not emergency, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And what we need, the, the decision is going to need to be made about whether we want to rehabilitate a dam to produce hydroelectric power at a small amount that may never repay what it costs to rebuild. Or decommission it and remove the hydroelectric part, it becomes just a regular dam and is no longer subject to FERC requirements. Related to those dams is the Dixboro Bridge. This is a one, a bridge that serves a purpose for us to get to the dam. I think it's Barton Dam. Is it Dixboro Barton Dam? Yeah. Where it's the only access we have to get to the dam. However, the bridge is needing repair and we do not own the bridge. So it is an issue with the city and the county to find out how this is going to be done and we need to do that sooner rather than later. Other than that, I have, if anyone has any questions?
Counselor.
Thank you for this presentation. Really happy to hear, I'm not ready to leave, I'm just calling.
I understand.
I'm really happy to hear about the compost coordinator. I think it's great. I think the more that you all can do to coordinate with OSI, the more we can do, especially around the circular economy to move that forward. I wanted to know what the possibility is that the sanitary sewer capacity comp plan would be ready sooner than later so that it can help inform the comprehensive land use plan and its decisions about where to prioritize development because it doesn't make sense as we implement that plan. We need to implement it consistent with where we have capacity and prioritize those areas where we can add residential opportunity where we have sanitary sewer capacity. So what's the possibility of coordinating, getting that information?
I mean, I'm, I'm very interested in coordinating specifically for the timeline. I would need to go back and ask staff that and I can certainly circle back with you for that, but I think that's a great question.
I was really excited to hear about the, I can't believe I'm going to say this, the gravel roads drainage study. That's a big deal in Ward 5, so I'm, I'm really, I'm sure that the residents in that part of town will be really happy. And then obviously with the recent water main break that affected the public schools, that's another thing I think is really exciting about your proposal. I, I guess, I have a sort of, I guess, a follow-up question to Councilmember Dish, which was on the capacity assessment. What assumptions are being made around the future growth of residents and sort of how are you forecasting that out?
I will have to talk to staff on that. I apologize, just with the short time I haven't got those kind of details. But I do know that they are, it's, the analysis that they're, they're doing now is, is in-depth. I think it's done by Troy Baughman, I believe is our, is excellent at that. But unfortunately, I don't have that answer, but I am happy to circle back to you for that one.
No, no need to apologize. You've only been here a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Mayor. Full disclosure, I got here when Jordan did, so for questions. I am here standing in for, for Monica tonight. I wanted to kind of touch base on a couple of requests, some asks that we have this year directed towards our most valuable asset, who are employees. The first ask that I want to talk about is a performance management system. We're looking, we currently lack a standardized effective system for evaluating employee performance, providing feedback and aligning individual goals with organizational objectives, organizational-wide. We're looking to implement a performance management system that, that can help us align, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. It facilitates professional development by identifying strengths and areas for improvement, supporting succession planning. It's going to enhance communication between supervisors, employees, and it drives increased employee productivity and accountability throughout the city. Our second ask is about employee engagement. So we're looking to ask for, for some money to do a needs assessment in FY26 that allows us to do an employee engagement survey to establish baselines and identify some key drivers of engagement specific to our workforce and design some targeted initiatives that we'll follow up with as we get those designed to try to boost employee morale, get commitment. We can have, it leads to higher retention rates, it reduces turnover costs that we have in positions, fosters a positive work environment, improves employee morale and overall job satisfaction. And really, it translates to better service and a more positive experience to, to the city, to the people that we, we provide services to. I wanted to talk about a couple Horizon issues. My brief is going a lot faster than everybody else's. So one of the things that we, we are seeing here across the city workforce is that we're, hiring a number of positions that, that require more money essentially, to be more competitive, right? So we're hiring positions that in the private sector are, we just can't compete with in the, in the, in the civilian sector. So our focus is on enhancing our competitive compensation, the brand, utilizing innovation recruitment technologies and trying to foster workplace culture so that we can overcome that. You know, with managing employee well-being and work environment. We're still, you know, recovering from COVID, as, as some people alluded to today, we're still, we're still coming out of that. So employee morale being in the, the hybrid work environment, now we have a lot of political uncertainty. So it's making sure that we're, we're paying attention to the pulse, the culture of our employees and making sure that we're paying attention to what they need to have a positive work environment. Navigating potential federal funding cuts. We've all talked about that tonight here. There's a lot of things that can happen with, with the federal funding cuts. Nobody really knows what's going to happen right now that impacts our ability to, to do a lot of different things. So we're looking for unique ways to enhance our current processes that we have within House Solutions in the event that some of those federal funding cuts happen. And then the biggest thing is we want to make sure that we have continued alignment with the city's values, their principles, their culture, making sure that we, we are continuing to review our policies from a, from an equity perspective, fostering a culture of collaboration, innovation, and just, you know, upholding our commitment to creating a workplace where all employees feel valued, respected. And, and I think that maintaining this alignment is fundamental to building trust, promoting employee engagement and achieving our organizational objectives. So there's some of the Horizon issues that we're really paying attention to. And I think that's all I have for the group. Apologize for my short brief and nerves. I haven't done this for quite some time, so I appreciate your patience with me.
You did great.
Thank you.
For being nervous. If you hadn't said anything, no one would have known. So, good job. And I don't mean to put you on the spot with this question, but I'm just curious if you have, like, how far off the mark are we in terms of salaries, in terms of competition with the private sector? Are we in the ballpark? Are we in the city? Are we, how far off is, what's the delta?
So, that's a really subjective question. It depends on the position, really. So like the SEU Director in the, I mean, there's, that's such a niche market that it's hard to say what, what the delta is there. Same thing with the transportation or like what Jennifer was talking about with her, her housing coordinator position, the economic. So it's, it's just hard to say. I can't give you a solid answer on that, but I'm happy to provide some comparisons on those positions.
I, I only ask because it feels like it's a recurring theme and it feels like it could be a real threat to some of the bigger things that we want to accomplish. So I think it warrants, obviously, it's something that's on your radar to pay attention to, but I think as, as Counsel, it's something we should be mindful of if we want to continue to focus on customer service, that we have, we have the very best talent at the city, which I know we do and we want to keep that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the presentation. And again, we would not have known you. I never said you not said anything. You did a great job. I guess I have more of a comment than a question, but I have worked in various levels of government to this point in my life and all of them have had some sort of performance management system and have also some, had some form of a employee engagement program. So I'm excited to see, you know, the proposal to development and, develop and implement these programs just because, you know, they're not necessarily flashy or sexy compared to some of the other proposals we've heard tonight, but I do think they pay themselves back over time by maintaining and keeping employees on staff, making sure they're, you know, happy and productive and, you know, along with pay rates like Councilmember Cornell brought up. Maintaining employees for the long term really does pay itself back over time. So I think those are really good and I was happy to see those tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
So you heard from six people and there's probably eight or nine more that you didn't hear from. So when you put all that together, like every year, we have more needs and more asked than we have revenue. So that's where the balancing comes in and that's what we're working on now. The presentation of the proposed budget will happen on April 21st. And so that should be your date on your calendar when you would start triggering budget questions. The process that we ask you to follow is to send your questions to Sarah, copy Marty, Kim, Busselmeyer and myself. And as you know, we capture all the questions, we print all the answers and everybody sees everything regardless of who asked. In a follow-up to the HR part, we hope to get some of our initial information on the compensation study next month, which will allow us to start dealing with our issue. You will hear me say more about that on April 21st, but we recognize it is a significant issue to be able to retain talent, to be able to attract talent. And there's a lot of demands out there for people who have skills. Any questions for me? We can go home, home now?
We have public comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Speaking of thanks, you know, thank you very much. Troy, we have staff, Troy, we have several. We look forward to seeing what.
It's probably better that way. I'll look forward to seeing what comes in, in April and, confirm the great and good work.
Thank you.
We now come to public comment general time. Public comment general time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment general time at a work session, you need not have signed up in advance. Speakers in all instances, both here and online, will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at public comment?
Kathy Griswold. And I believe people will be arriving about 8:45, so get out of here before then. Also, people would be able to go home and I wouldn't be up here if pedestrians didn't die on our streets. Came across the article today from 2015 when we passed a resolution with a goal of zero deaths by 2025. However, we've already had one death this year and it was at an area that we talked about. We knew it was a problem area, but we didn't take any action. I do want to thank the two councilmembers who actually went out there and met with an engineer, a private engineer, looked at the crash site and have identified some improvements. And I hope those improvements and improvements at other crash sites will be funded this I didn't hear anything mentioned about improving illumination at our crosswalks and I know that is one of the contributing factors to some of these crashes. There was a mention of the retro reflectivity level on our signs and I did hear a few years ago from a Michigan State traffic engineer that the reflectivity was a little too high on our signs and we usually create them ourselves and so we need to be cognizant of that. The other issue, I don't know how to restate it, so it's understandable, but when people have a complex problem to address, they have a tendency to oversimplify the problem definition and then they go out and solve the simplified problem, which really doesn't solve the real problem. That's what I believe happened with the Miller Road two-way cycle track. I carefully looked at the video and the documentation. The two-way cycle track description does not mention the driveways, the residential driveways. Those are critical to the design of the street. And it brings me back to one of my old topics, which is site distance. And while engineers have the authority to make most decisions, they cannot ignore federal standards for site distance. And why we have continued to do that is beyond me. So anyway, I'm not going to go away and I am also going to appeal this to the highest levels possible because the woman who was killed was a friend of a friend and this has to stop and we have to do our designs incorporating site distance. So I hope we will so that we can get a change order in and not delay this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in house who'd like to speak at public comment? Pardon me. Yes, is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at public comment? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at public comment?
Mayor, I only have one caller online. It doesn't look like he has his hand up.
See, no, and public comment is closed. Have I mushed into a, are there communications from Counsel? Counselor Dish?
So Cynthia and I wanted to, or Councilmember Harrison and I wanted to say that we will be having a coffee hour on April 14th at, yes, at the downtown library and we hope you all come. And Ms. Jennifer Hall will be there to talk, yes, she will be our special guest to talk about all the amazing-- about all the amazing things that are going on with the affordable housing knowledge. Thank you.
Further communication? Motion adjourned, please move by. Malik Watson, discussion. All in favor? Pose, we're adjourned.